Public and Beaufort County Board of Education meetings. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker on Beaufort County School District and school-related topics. Citizens wishing to participate in public comments can do so in person or via phone. There are two scheduled public comment forms during each board meeting. The first is a 30-minute session near the beginning of the meeting, limited to topics on the board meeting agenda. The second is a 15-minute session which takes place prior to adjournment but no later than 9:00 p.m. Requests to participate in public comments via phone will be accepted electronically. You can find the Board of Education public comment form on our website, www.beaufortschools.net/AboutUs/BoardOfEdPublicComments. Please sign up using the public comment form 24 hours from the day of the start of the meeting. Requesters will receive a phone call during their respective budget form time and should be ready to speak. Citizens desiring to participate in person must fill out a public comment card that can be obtained from the board clerk upon arrival. In the event the board has not finished addressing all items listed on the May 20, 2025 agenda, the board will reconvene at 6:00 p.m. on May 21st, the next busiest day to finish the agenda items. So, Madam Secretary, do we have any actions to be addressed in the executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion to go into executive session. I move that the Beaufort County School Board of Education move into executive session for the following reasons. Receipt of legal advice relating to pending claims covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated section 30-4-7A2. Receipt of legal advice regarding Riverview Charter Schools facility proposals pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated section 30-4-70A2. Discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements related to properties in Southern Beaufort County pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated section 30-4-70A2. Discussion of employment, appointment, promotion, compensation pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated section 30-4-70A1.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Small, any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to know in pursuant to the receipt related to legal pending claims, section 30-4-70, what, A-2, who will be advising us on that?
Ms. Cartage.
And would that be the only person advising us, giving us legal advice in the executive session today?
No, Sir, but you asked about that particular claim. So we have, in addition, we have Andrew White and we have Sarah Robertson.
And they will be advising us on which?
Andrew White on Riverview Charter and Sarah Robertson on the Southern Beaufort County Contractual arrangements related to properties in Southern Beaufort County.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Now have all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Online, do we have anybody online?
Gordon, aye.
Gordon, aye, okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now go to executive session.
We call the meeting back to order. Madam Secretary, do we have any actions as appropriate regarding matters discussed in executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education direct the superintendent to negotiate an agreement with Riverview Charter School.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Small. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
On line? Ms. Gordon?
She's not on yet.
Nothing heard. We have any nays?
Uh, Mrs. Smith is a nay.
Mr. Smith is a nay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
That concludes the motions out of executive session.
Okay. We're gonna have one for him now? Okay, yep. Madam Secretary, do we have a motion to approve, in fact, to the board, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we need to have an amendment added by a two-thirds majority vote. I move to amend the agenda to add a board business item for off, uh, I'm sorry, I did the wrong thing. I would like to amend the agenda to nominate Carlton Dallas to serve as the South Carolina School Board Association Director from Region 1.
I'll second that motion. It's seconded by Ms. Dr. Carr. Any discussion?
And as a point of order, it does require a two-thirds vote to pass.
Roger. All right, all those in favor may signify by saying aye. Aye. On line?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon, aye. Madam, uh, Ms. Gordon? Nothing heard, but it's passed by two-thirds majority.
With that, then, I move to approve the rest of the agenda as stated.
Have a second?
Second.
Who was that? Mr. Green, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. On line?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon, aye. Ms. Gordon? Nothing heard. Any nays?
Mrs. Smith was going abstaining.
Abstaining, all right. Motion carries. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a student performance this evening. The creative arts singers, the ambassador group from Hilton Head Island School for the Creative Arts, is coming in now comprised of fourth and fifth grade chorus members. They are under the direction of Melinda Bray. They will, they will be singing "Music, Music, Music Alone Shall Live," and "I've Got Rhythm." Ms. Bray, when you're ready, take it away.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Private concert.
Hey! Hi! Whoa! Nickelodeon, it's a Nickelodeon. All I want is loving you and music, music, music. I'd do anything for you, anything you want me to. All I want is loving you and music, music, music. Closer, my dear, come closer. The nicest part of any melody is when you're singing here with me. So put another nickel in, in the Nickelodeon. All I want is loving you and music, music, music. Anything for you, anything you want me to. All I want is loving you and music, music, music. Closer, my dear, come closer. The nicest part of any melody is when you're singing here with me. So put another nickel in, in the Nickelodeon. All I want is loving you and music, music, music. Anything for you, anything you want me to. All I want is loving you and music, music, music. Closer, my dear, come closer. The nicest part of any melody is when you're singing here with me. So put another nickel in, in the Nickelodeon. All I want is loving you and music, music, music. (applause) All I want is loving you and music, music, music. (applause) Music shall perish beneath the sky. Music alone shall live, music alone shall live, music alone shall live, never to die. All things shall perish beneath the sky. 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 Music alone shall live, music alone shall live, music alone shall live, never to die. I got rhythm, I got music. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. All things shall perish, I know my friends, you know my friends, round my door. I got starlight, I got speaking. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. All things shall perish, I know my friends, you know my friends, round my door. I got starlight, I got speaking. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. All things shall perish, I know my friends, you know my friends, round my door. I got starlight, I got speaking. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got starlight, I got speaking. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. All things shall perish, I know my friends, you know my friends, round my door. I got starlight, I got speaking. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. All things shall perish, I know my friends, you know my friends, round my door. I got starlight, I got speaking. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. I got daisies, hay green pastures. I got my friends who can ask for anything more. (applause)
Thank you, Ms. Bray, and thank you, students. This was fantastic music and action, and I'm in cutless overload right now.[1764.15][1764.15](laughter) Okay, Dr. Rodriguez, we have points of celebration.
Thank you, sir. This evening, on points of celebration, we begin with Students of the Month. And the character education Student of the Month for April, we are excited about this. The character trait was forgiveness, and forgiveness is defined as to stop feeling anger towards someone who has done something wrong. He has both of his teachers here tonight, and I'm going to read what they wrote about him and they nominated him for Student of the Month. Storm is an enthusiastic and dedicated 2nd grade student who arrives at school with a positive attitude each day. When faced with challenges, he consistently perseveres and puts forth his best effort. Storm has cultivated strong relationships with both his teacher and classmates, demonstrating kindness and respect in all interactions. He is known for his excellent manners and his polite demeanor, making him a joy to be around. In group settings, Storm collaborates effectively, contributing to teamwork and fostering a supportive environment. He adheres to classroom rules and expectations, showcasing responsibility and integrity. Storm is an exceptional friend who consistently demonstrates kindness towards his peers. Throughout my time working with him, I've witnessed his remarkable ability to show forgiveness. One memorable instance occurred when another student made a negative comment about something Storm was doing. Instead of reacting negatively, Storm calmly expressed his feelings about the comment and how it affected him. The other student sincerely apologized, and Storm quickly forgave him, choosing to move forward without holding any resentment. Storm understands that everyone makes mistakes and can make poor choices at times. Acknowledging our actions and apologizing when necessary is crucial for personal growth and maintaining positive relationships. His compassionate nature and willingness to forgive, excuse me, exemplify the importance of understanding and empathy with our interactions with others. Congratulations, Storm. We are very proud of you at Michael C. Riley.
Now, I believe Destiny is here, and if you would come forward so we can recognize Destiny as the Northern Beaufort County Student of the Month.
Good evening, everybody. I am not Dr. Siobhan Brown, I'm Dr. Keith Weaver. I am the 7th grade principal, assistant principal at Ladies Island Middle. I could not be happier to stand here with this young lady. She is an amazing, amazing young lady. She's a three-sport athlete. She honestly could be part of every Student of the Month category. She fits every single one of them. She is amazing. Every one of her teachers wanted to nominate her every month, but obviously she can't win all 10 of them. So this is the one we nominated her for. I couldn't be happier that she won. She is... I know I keep saying it, but she's an amazing student. So I am very proud, Destiny. Her mom just walked in the door, they want to take pictures? Her mom, they just want to take pictures? You see?
Do you want to come take a picture?
Yeah. Daddy?
Oh, no, I'm fine.
Okay.
Okay, next is the Middle School Soccer and Baseball Awards. And tonight, we're celebrating Spring Middle School Soccer and Baseball, and District Athletic Director, Mr. Carlos Cave, is here to tell us more.
So tonight, I'm being assisted by the middle school athletic here at Hilton Head Middle. We're going to begin with baseball. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the 2025 Baseball Player of the Year from HE McCracken, Nicholas Carpenter. Coach's Choice Coach of the Year voted on by the middle school baseball coaches, Mr. Dewan Fields, Bluffton Middle School. Coach of the Year and Coach of the Championship Winning HE McCracken Baseball Team, our very own, Mr. Dave Grissom. Now we move on to Girls Soccer. Player of the Year from Hilton Head Middle, Ms. Yasmin Kuiper. Ms. Yasmin Kuiper. And your Coach's Choice Coach of the Year for Girls Soccer from HE McCracken, Ms. Emily Whitfield. And your Championship Coach, Girls Soccer from Hilton Head Middle School, Mr. Jacob Ken. The Boys Soccer Champion and Player of the Year from Robert Smalls, Mr. Justin Ramirez. Coach's Choice Coach of the Year voted on by his peers, Mr. Trey Austin, Bluffton Middle School. And the Champion Winning Coach of the Robert Smalls Leadership Academy, 2024-25 Coach of the Year, Mr. Philippe Vinnronco. The final award that we're going to present tonight was established this year and voted on by the Athletic Directors in our Beaufort County School District. This award is a celebration of athletic achievement as an overall program. This is the inaugural presentation of this award. This award again goes to the program that on the field had tremendous success in all of the sports that they offered. And this year's inaugural winner of the Beaufort County School District Championship Circle Award goes to Hilton Head Island Middle School, Mr. Lewis and Clint Austin. The principal, if you'll come forward to take a picture and receive this award.
I'm not following directions either, but this is my husband.
Okay, in 2025, 2026, Teachers of the Year and Support Staff of the Year. This is one of our favorite points of celebration, and tonight, we have the honor of recognizing each of our schools' teachers and support staff of the year. The professionals we recognize tonight were selected by their peers, which makes their awards even more meaningful. And on behalf of the district, we support each of you and appreciate your dedication to providing excellent educational opportunities to our students. The 25-26 Teachers of the Year and Support Staff of the Year for the following schools are as follows. Battery Creek High School, Julie Amston and Heather Bailey. For Beaufort Elementary, Tamira Smith and Iris Cruz. For Beaufort High, Martine Marshall and Alathia Gamble. For Beaufort Jasper, Academy for Career Excellence, it's Jeff Bates and Jill Pungalo. For Beaufort Middle, it's Kristy Barr and Lamika Capers. For Bluffton Elementary and ECC, Jill Pink and Deborah Albert. For Bluffton High, it's Beth Herring and Rosario Rivera. For Bluffton Middle, it's Samantha Guerra and Kristen Holloman. For Broad River Elementary, it's Lakeisha Williams and Amy Butler. For Cusa Elementary, it's Amy Turner and Markeia Cohen. For HE McCracken Middle, it's Allison Gallagher and Emmanuel Wheeler. For Hilton Head Early Childhood Center, it's Allison Lopes and Ayesha Austin. For Hilton Head Island High, it's Hannah Harrington and Katie Joel Bolcholtz. For Hilton Head Island IB Elementary, it's Jason Ziegler and Miranda Patterson. For Hilton Head Island Middle, Andrea Norman and Jose Trujillo. For Hilton Head Island School for Creative Arts in Defuski Island, it's Cynthia Strant and Nitsi Garcia. For Joseph S. Shanklin Elementary, it's Kaylee Flanagan and Regina Holmes. For Ladies Island Elementary, it's Cicely Scott and Jolanda Hazel. For Ladies Island Middle, it's Corey Hollis and Mariah Kinney. For May River High, it's Kelly Jarden and Julie Howchin. For Michael C. Riley Elementary is Liz Doe and Sabrina Copeland. For Mossy Oaks Elementary, it's Misty Gerard and Deanna Snipes. For Oakatee Elementary, it's Amanda Altman and Carrie Dollar. For Port Royal Elementary, Jordan Franks and Yvonne Simmons. For Pritchardville Elementary, it's Madeline Lumley and Richard Kemperson. For Red Cedar Elementary, it's Audrey Kaney and Katie Ciuffalo. For River Ridge Academy, it's Marlena Tracy and Taylor Anderson. For Robert Smalls Leadership Academy, it's Rebecca Gerard and John Little. For St. Helena Island Elementary, it's Felicia Simmons and Gwynn Campbell. For Whale Branch Early College High, it's Caraboulin and Calvin Simmons. For Whale Branch Elementary and James J. Davis ECC, it's Sabrina Johnson-Green and Shariae Nguyen. For Whale Branch Middle, it's James Floyd and Jessica Melbourne. For Transportation Department, it's Kamiko Miller. For the Office of Early Childhood Education, it's Judy Baballas. And at the District Office, it's Tina Purvis. And the Induction Teacher of the Year, Jennifer Cass from Mossy Oaks Elementary. The District Induction Teacher of the Year honor began in 2021 to recognize a first-year teacher who demonstrates the passion, dedication, and promise of the teaching profession's next generation. And here, to introduce the 25 District Induction Teacher of the Year is Mossy Oaks Elementary Principal Swendy Oles.
Good evening. It is my absolute honor and privilege to introduce to you a truly exceptional educator, Ms. Cass, the 2024-2025 District Induction Teacher of the Year. This has been Ms. Cass's first year at Mossy Oaks Elementary, and what a remarkable year it has been. Like so many first-year teachers, she stepped into the classroom facing the challenges and balancing work and home life, mastering new curriculum and standards, and building strong relationships with her students, all while learning the ins and outs of a brand-new school community. But Ms. Cass didn't just survive her first year, she thrived. She approached every challenge with grace, perseverance, and an unwavering commitment to her students. From day one, she embraced her role with a champion's mindset, collaborating closely with her team, soaking in feedback, and always putting students' growth at the center of her work. Thanks to her dedication and heart, she has built a classroom of confident, capable, and curious first-grade learners who are well-prepared for the next step in their journey. and curious first-grade learners who are well-prepared for the next step in their journey. Her impact has been immediate and meaningful, and we are incredibly proud to have her as part of our Mossy Oaks family. Please join me in celebrating Ms. Cass, the 2024-2025 District Induction Teacher of the Year.
Got a couple more, three more this evening. And so, we're proud that we have so much to celebrate. So, if you give me a second here, I'd like to announce the South Carolina Department of Education Low Country Technology Champion. The South Carolina Department of Education recently honored 12 career and technical education students, and we're proud to announce that one of them is from May River High School. And here to introduce the Low Country Technology Champion is welding instructor Brad Childress.
Good evening, how are you guys?
How are you?
Doing good. A little bit nervous, I'm better at welding than I am public speaking, but anytime I get an opportunity to brag on this wonderful young lady, I'm going to do it. I want to start by saying a few words about this amazing young lady. I've had the pleasure of teaching Morgan for the past couple of years in welding. When Morgan started welding, she was very quiet and very observant. The reason why she was that way, she had some big shoes to fill. She had two big brothers that went through my class, and they did super, super good. Morgan soon developed into a leader and a champion from winning many competitions, passing all of her certifications like OSHA-10 Local Industry Welding Certifications, and two, not one, but two National Welding Certifications through the American Welding Society. Morgan has surprised me, I mean, sorry, excuse me, a little bit nervous. Morgan has surpassed what I call a good student. Morgan is a great student. So with great pride, I present you the Low Country Technology Champion, Morgan Wegier.
For members, some of you may recognize Morgan because whenever we had a grand opening at River Ridge, Morgan was the student who was speaking on behalf of the student body. And then later on, we were having a groundbreaking celebration at May River High School a few years later, Morgan was there speaking on behalf of the student body. So, congratulations, Morgan. Next award, the other night, I received an email, and the email reads as follows. The letter that came with it reads as follows. The SCBDA Outstanding Performance Award is the highest possible award given to a band program in the state of South Carolina. Points are accumulated through participation and ratings earned at the following state-sponsored performance events. Marching Band Championships, high school level, All-State and Region Band, Concert Performance Assessment, Solo and Ensemble Festival. It is a great pleasure to inform you that May River High School has earned the points necessary to receive the SCBDA Outstanding Performance Award for the 24-25 school year. The outstanding marching concert and individual student performances are a testament to the high quality of teaching taking place in the band department at your school. Congratulations on this wonderful achievement. Sincerely, Rick Langdale Jr., Awards Chairman for the South Carolina Band Directors Association. And so, we have Principal Ron Webb, we have Ms. Deb Hamner, and some students that are here, and I invite you to come forward and say a few words. Ms. Hamner?
Thank you so much for allowing us to come in and be recognized for this great award. I have with me Luke Bornshower and Skylar Thornton, who are members of the student leadership as well, if you guys want to come on up. They've played an integral part of the program this year, all of the kids have, starting with the marching band. We tied for 19th out of 22 out of this entire state of South Carolina for our level, and that's the school level, the size of the school, not the size of the band, and we have a pretty small band. So, it speaks accolades on everything that they've done. And usually, we take five to six students to the region band participating in it, and this year, we took 12 students to that. So, everything, even though we don't have the money to put in for teachers to come in and work individually with the students on solo and ensembles, they really work hard and overcome those battles by doing that. And next, I'm looking forward to the same thing happening next year as well. So, thank you so much. A lot of the other band members weren't able to come because yesterday, we did a big, a mass band rehearsal for the parade that all of Beaufort County is going to be participating in for Memorial Day in the Beaufort Parade, so I hope you guys will all be able to come and watch all of the bands together. Thank you so much.
Now, I have one more award this evening. South Carolina Association for School Administrators, SCASA 2025 Lifetime Achievement Award. Each year, up to three education administrators receive the prestigious SCASA Lifetime Achievement Award, which recognizes the lifetime achievement of veteran administrators. Serving in the role of Chief Administrative and Human Resources Officer for well over a decade, Ms. Walton has overseen many initiatives to ensure that the Beaufort County School District hires and supports educators in every area. She has led her team to spearhead events such as the Substitute Blitz, Job Fair, International Nights, Salary Compensation Study and Implementation, COVID-19 Response and Recovery, along with many other programs and initiatives. Ms. Walton is also always willing to lend an ear when challenging situations arise, providing sage advice and guidance based on her years of experience in serving the staff, families, students, and board members of the Beaufort County School District. In fact, her strong leadership is made exceptionally apparent in crisis situations as she consistently remains steadfast, calm, and supportive while addressing the circumstance at hand from start to finish, with a type of poise and inner strength that only seasoned and effective leaders such as Ms. Walton possess. There are many individuals who make a difference in a school district, but not all can carry the weight of providing a district with longevity, institutional history, and a strong sense of being a pillar for the district. Alice Walton has the knowledge, skill, and fortitude to be the backbone of the Beaufort County School District, but what is of greater significance is her dedication to challenging those around her to produce the very best. This is truly the hallmark of a great leader. Congratulations on this achievement, and thank you for your dedicated service to the Beaufort County School District, Ms. Walton. Come on, please.
So, I don't like surprises. The nomination for the award was the first surprise. The second surprise was my staff kept it from me. The third surprise was the superintendent did this tonight and didn't tell me. But I have to say that the biggest reward for this award is the fact that the colleagues that I've worked with and fostered relationships with have given me the opportunity to be the leader that I am in Beaufort. And without them, I wouldn't be here. Thank you very much.
That concludes our points of celebration this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. And we have one public comment card for the first period, and that is an agenda item, and the agenda item was May River Bands Award and Mr. Jim Miller.
I can't say enough about positive things about that award. The most positive is that it is, the South Carolina Band Directors Association keeps records of this award over 50 years. This is the only second time that any school in the district has received this award. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item is a chair's report. I have no report this night, so we'll go right to the committee reports. And the first report is Finance Committee by Mr. Dallas.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, last week, on the 15th, we had a Finance Committee meeting, and a couple of things we've tried to focus on certainly is being very frugal when there's a lot of uncertainty about where the dollars will come from. And the finance staff, as well as the various people in the rest of the organization, we believe have done a good job of preparing us for things going forward. We also had some discussions about potential exposure and how we could mitigate some of those things as well. We've already identified through CFO Crosby and others that we have $27 million that potentially could be at risk going forward. It has not been pulled as of yet, and we've been told that as long as it's committed and in the budget, that it will come through for this particular year. So, we feel very comfortable about the efforts that have been made. The other thing, and then we're going to ask CFO Crosby to come up, because she deserves the opportunity to talk about some of the great things that she and her staff have done. But the other thing is using our reports in a very efficient way, so that we are looking at the variances and being able to move very quickly to those and talk about solutions for improvement in areas of deficit or what's making a particular area that's really exceeding its targets. What are they doing and how do we capture that and spread it to other areas of the organization? So, Ms. Crosby, would you like to come up, ma'am?
Good evening. Get that on there without knocking anything over. So, thank you, Mr. Dallas. Wonderful summary. I won't hit on all of the details of this finance report. The agenda, we had about nine different items, but really, the common themes were efficiency and continuously improving our processes to save money, save time, and to save us, reduce risk of any fraudulent activity, such as we have received a recommendation to lessen, do more electronic transfers of funds to our vendors, to our employees for reimbursements. And so, we're embarking on an effort to do an electronic travel reimbursement. That way, we're not sending checks out in the mail, we're not folding and sealing very expensive check stock, that sort of thing. That's one example. But in many other areas, we're looking to make efficiencies like that. And as a district, one of the largest employers in the county, you can imagine the amount of travel reimbursements that we process is probably two-thirds of the vendor checks that we make. So, we also presented the financial report for the third quarter. Everything was on, the revenues were almost identical to the projections of what we were expecting this year. And we do have the remaining three months, but also, teachers begin to be paid in August, so we have July to accrue back as well. So, there's still some payroll to occur that is earned in the current fiscal year, but paid out just beyond the end of the fiscal year. As Mr. Dallas mentioned, we currently have any federal funding cuts, but we do have $27 million of funds in the district that are federally funded. Many of these are supplemental programs. The largest program is Food Service Program through USDA. So, we're constantly looking and monitoring at those to make sure that we're up to date with any information that we have. There's only one indication recently that there's a delay in approvals. We're beginning to see delays in processing from the federal government. Our MSAP or the Magnet Schools Assistance Program is in its fifth year of authorization, and we have not yet received that fifth year authorization from Congress yet. So, we're actively awaiting that, and we're working with our U.S. Department of Ed colleagues to make sure that we're continuously up to date on when that authorization is going to occur, which we do expect for it to be soon. So, we have a few approvals this evening. There will be two. One is an E-Rate Authorization, the other is a Grant Authorization. These are standard approvals that we have every year, so we'll be asking for motions to be made, I believe, out of the committee report. So, we do have those prepared for you. And those are standard authorizations that allow us to either apply for grants or apply for federal E-Rate funds and reimbursement of those funds for services such as wireless access network, internet. And so, again, we're continuing to talk about just understanding more about different funds or different categories of budgets, and then ways that we can improve and make things more efficient, not only for the entire district, but also for the viewers to be able to see things more visually and to understand things rather than lots of words and numbers and things like that. So, as we round out the budget process over the next month or so, we'll be shifting gears toward being able to work on some of those things as we finish up the budget and our early spring audit work that's being done this week as well. So, with that, I'd be happy to take either a motion or any questions or comments.
Yes, I'd just like to take this moment to recognize Ms. Crosby, the superintendent, the chair, who made a very successful presentation to the Beaufort County Council for the second reading. There was almost an exuberance on their part in their willingness to support and partner with the school district, so kudos to all involved in that.
Is the motion? I think she does.
I do have the motions, but I did just, it's not really a question, but I'm just taking this opportunity. I was actually shocked that we were still having paper checks. I didn't realize paper checks still really existed. One of my, I guess my question is just, so what other vendors are we still paying? Because this is a very narrow, just travel reimbursement. Are we still doing non-travel reimbursement with paper checks for the most part? Or are we, give me a percentage of how much of our payments are sent out with paper checks and how much are sent out electronically? Is it a 50-50? Is it?
I don't have the answer to that. I know who does, but I could bring that back information to you and send it, the email to all of the board.
My overarching theme and comment is fantastic. We got to kill paper, y'all. It is time. It's time to put paper down. It's time to get everything in one spot, and it's time to get everything. It's so much better online.
I think we were focused more on the internal documentation, the purchase requests, the purchase orders, requisitions, those sorts of things, and all the documentation supporting that. So, over the last several years, we've been making sure that we're paperless internally, and so shifting away from the storage and the shredding and all of that. So, that's what we were focused on in the past. This is sort of another phase, and we're going to be, we've already begun to, certain departments, and we want to just fine-tune that to make sure the documentation's coming forward in an email to you, to the employees, to make sure that you are seeing what you're being paid for and is electronically posted. So, yes, we're on an effort. There's just a lot of work to do in between with auditors and budget and all of those things, so we're fitting this in. So we're fitting this in, and it's a priority for us to get finished by, implemented by July 1.
I was just a little bit amused that there was training requirements for electronic payments, but we'll, I'll leave it there.
It should be relatively minimal and self-explanatory.
All right. So we have two motions from the Finance Committee here. The first one regarding E-Rate. I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education authorize the filing of E-Rate Funding Year 2025 applications for eligible E-Rate Category 1 services, and that by doing so, the Board acknowledges that it will budget for sufficient funds to pay for the district's share of these services that are not supported by the E-Rate program.
Second? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Fraser. No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Online?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon, aye. Ms. Gordon? Nothing heard? Any abstentions? Any nays?
None.
You're good? Motion carries.
Okay. Second motion coming out of Finance Committee. The Board of Education hereby authorize the superintendent, or I guess I move that the Board of Education hereby authorize the superintendent or their designee to apply for, sign, submit, and administer federal, state, local, and foundation grant applications and cooperative agreements for the 2025-2026 school year.
Do you have a second? Dr. Carr? Any discussion? Saying none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Pastor Gordon?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Chloe Gordon, aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Motion carries.
Thank you.
If anything further on the Finance? Okay. Your next step is Legislative, and you're still on the docket.
Still on the docket. The Legislative Committee has been spending time looking at how do we develop our priorities going forward. The Assembly is at rest now, but they come, return in January of 2026. And we are asking, we have asked our members to submit their priority list by next week so that we can actually go through a process of culling out and prioritizing what the committee says and recommends, but also at the Board level. So every Board member will have that opportunity. The, the other thing that we are looking at is we're asking people, Legislative Committee, Board members, anyone who has contact with us, to identify areas that you believe that as a school board, we are affected and that we should be able, and we are able to actually proffer some legislative suggestions that are properly vetted within the protocols of the state of South Carolina, within the protocols of the school district, and that we can move those forward based on a vote. We really want to look at where are the opportunities to improve the delivery of educational services to our kids and the families that support those youngsters. So that has been the real primary topic that we're working on. We probably will be able to conclude that in another, hopefully, six weeks and then be able to move that forward with effect and proper protocols. And that's it for Legislative.
Any questions for Legislative Committee?
I just got something.
Go ahead.
And I would just like to add, we, with the last meeting, I do think that there, that the prioritization process is very, very important. I think that there are some big, big issues confronting school districts legislatively, and I think that really we need to, as a Legislative Committee and as a Board, keep ourselves educated on those and keep the discussions going. So I think prioritization is key of those issues.
Mr. Nay?
He's ready to roll.
I don't have a comment for that, but I'm, I'm next in the queue.
Oh, okay. You're up, sir. Put me in coach. Yeah. All right. So any discussion?
Yeah, we, we just want to impress upon the people listening who are here, who are maybe viewing from home or what have you, how critically important it is to be involved and engage. And we are having meetings and Pastor Moore, Pastor Gordon, I'm sorry, held one in which we had 57 people attend to learn about the school district and opine with where they believe we can do things to improve the delivery of educational services to students in that particular area. So really, we're asking everyone if you are involved or if you'd like to be. We definitely are open to that because we believe that one of the most important ways to communicate and the most credible ways to communicate is from someone that you know and someone that you trust. And so interpersonal delivery, which would be supported and really underpinned by all the great digital work that's done, but please, if you have any ideas or questions, please feel free to send them to us. And that's it for me.
Okay.
Us.
All right. Mr. Nay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know our agenda says, there only looks like a couple of things on there, but there's a lot to talk about. Let's see, we do have two motions at the end, but we'll get to that soon. First up, custodial maintenance, between, on custodials between district, district staff and vendors. We had 709 custodial inspections. Average vendor inspection score was 86.4. Average district inspection was 81.1. Each of the three vendors recognized monthly and quarterly employee awards, which I believe, I'm sure somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, that we're going to present next month, the recognition. As far as maintenance goes, total work orders today is 23,251. 19,163 are complete. We have 2,190 in progress. There was a work order backlog that we discussed, and there was an analysis done that found out that work orders are being completed but not noted in the system due to our lack of or lost physical copy of the work order, thus making it look like there was an exorbitant amount of work orders that were listed as open. This is driving a move to a streamlined electronic system, which is now being researched by our operations staff. Even with the antiquated system, the number of days taken to complete work orders has fallen from just under five days to just under four days. Our April school blitz was Buffington High School. 29 work orders were, for that school only, 21 were completed. And let's see, as far as maintenance goes, we still have eight maintenance positions open. If you know anybody looking for plumbing jobs, send them our way. Let's see, as far as the fiscal year, 27 8% project list. As a little background for the community, our facilities master plan is a 10-year capital improvement project list and is updated annually. The list contains everything from lighting, flooring, windows, doors, and roofing to HVAC and even the necessity for new buildings. The current total project projected need stands at 364.3 million. To align with our long-term debt management plan and to not raise debt millage, the operations staff was asked to bring forward $35 million worth of 8% projects. We got input from principals, project managers, and staff around the district, and the ops staff also took into account the lifecycle requirement needs of the HVACs and roofs and servers and network switches and the light and fleet vehicles. And I asked the operations team to bring forward three options that each focused on different priorities. The operations committee is still reviewing the options and discussing the details. At our next meeting on June 5th, we will finalize our recommendations to the Board and bring those forward at the June 10th Board meeting. Construction update. 2019 referendum, 22 project closeouts remain. Financial updates are all green lights. Of the 375.7 billion, or million dollar budget, remaining available funds, including contingency, is 3.4 million. Remaining funds list that is proposed to the Board has been altered to align to our Bond Council's guidance on bond spending. For the 23 referendum, all monthly project updates are reporting green light for budget and schedule to include the May River High School CTE and ROTC addition and Hilton Head Island High School, the exception being May River Elementary, but more of that in a minute. Public reading for the annexation and rezoning for the new Early Learning Center is scheduled to be completed this month. The City of Beaufort Planning and Zoning has approved the zoning request for the new Ladies Island Middle School replacement. The first reading at City Council is scheduled to occur this month. Of the 439 million dollar budget, 182 million has been paid and committed with 256.4 remaining in funds to include contingency. For the elementary, I'm sorry, the May River Elementary, the results of the traffic study are in. I know everybody's holding their breath on that one, but there are no surprises. It shows that the, the school will have minimal impact on the traffic. It is recommended that a signal be installed at the May River High School main entrance as well as dedicated turn lanes with queues varying lengths between 250 to 350 feet. We are waiting to return word from Paul Meadowbluff because we are obviously looking to enter negotiations on the results, or the results based on that traffic study. The community outreach dedication ceremony for Beaufort Middle School to rename the Media Center to the Carol Ingram Lifelong Learning Center took place on May 1st. And then request for proposal, proposals and qualifications. Proposals have been received and selections committee are making to evaluate the construction managers' proposals for the Buffington High School CTE building and the Riverview Gymnasium addition. Workforce housing proposal. Abode Development and the Coastal Community Development Corporation have obtained 4.4 acres of land adjacent to Wilborn Road behind Hilton Head Island High School. Their goal is to develop a 32-unit multifamily apartment complex that prioritizes district employees to address the critical shortage of affordable workforce housing on the island. If required, to put the parking on the land that is provided, those 4.4 acres, the parking would take up all the green space that is not taken up by the construction of the apartment building. The developers are seeking an agreement to use the adjacent parking lot that currently is being used as construction, yeah, construction storage. This would allow them to use the remaining property for green space or maybe even a pool. Motion in a minute. And then projection, Pritchard Street easement agreement. The Beaufort County School District and the Town of Bluffton have been working together on Pritchard Street Drainage Improvement Project since May. During our committee meetings, especially the specifically one in April, the meeting brought forward some verbiage in the, in the stuff that was kind of confusing. There was like, some of it said that we had to pay, some of it said they had to pay. But we asked them to go back and clear that up, and it's all been cleared up and brought forward, and that will be our second motion. Yes. What can I do for you, Ms. Boatright?
Who do I ask?
Go ahead.
Hold on a second. Before you go on, I have to say that Mr. Audience is not here, so.
Take it easy.
Yeah, well, yes. And, and responses could vary.
Okay, so.
Oh, gotcha. We have Ms. Majors and Ms. Crutchfield.
Oh, good. So thank you. I attended the last Operations Committee meeting, as did I think almost all of the other Board members, and a lot of good stuff. I am very excited about the possibility of Abode and, and what they're projecting, what's, it's contagious, and what they are proposing. And I think it's going to be tremendously important for Hilton Head schools. So, but the other thing that I want to bring up is, one of the reasons we're having yet another meeting, and these meetings go on for such a long time, around 8% projects, is because the way the district does it is they bring forward, they take 35 million, and it's line by line. So there is, for example, a $20,000 concrete pad for a bench that is listed under academic support. And it's, you know, there's a lot of big ticket items, but it is a long list. And then you're never going to get 11 Board members horse trading over, you know, these amounts of money. So back in 2022, we had, we took this on because in 2022, I was the chair of the Operations Committee, and the facilities assessment came out. And the facilities assessment was a comprehensive inventory, for lack of a better term, of all of our buildings, all the systems, mechanical, roofing, plumbing, you know, housing, casings, all the different things. And basically, school by school, they photographed everything. They said, here's what needs to be done immediately. Here's what can wait. They have all these projections. It's a, it's a beautiful document. And we wanted to tie the 8% projects to the facilities assessment. So what we proposed and did in 2022 was we had, like, I think it was 10, Robin sent me the executive summary that we got. We asked the district to move to a format of having an executive summary where they would propose 10 different line items, like we need, you know, $500,000 for roofing. We need, you know, 1.2 million dollars for mechanical, including. And we would approve that amount of money. And then the district would be responsible for figuring out what schools and how it allocated and how they categorized it, and we would provide accountability by getting reports on that. Somehow, over the last three years, we've gone back to this, in my opinion, I'm going to say it bluntly, I think this ridiculous spreadsheet where we are line item bit by bit, every nut and bolt, by school, and in these kind of very broad strokes, the only categories really we have are asset protection, safety and security, and academic support. So everything gets into one of those things. And it doesn't make sense to me, and I think it leads to a lot of frustration. So I guess, Carol, you're on the hot seat. Why did we go back to this method?
I think it was Board member request to see the detail behind those categories.
Sorry, Carol, we can't hear you. Hold on. It's muffled.
I've got my microphone as loud as it goes.
There you go. It's on our end. Now it's fixed.
Okay. Sorry about that. I think, Ms. Boatright, it goes back to Board member request to see the detail behind those categories. And so it evolved backwards in just showing that. But again, we try to present it to you all in the categories, broke it down a couple of different ways so that you can see those big groupings. But people still wanted to see the details behind that, and so they're there for you all to see. It's not that we want you to kind of pick through those line item things. That was not our request. It was to kind of ask you for guidance on how you want to prioritize things.
And we have that, sorry, Ms. Crutchfield, we did have that discussion, several of them actually, during the Board sessions. I thought we actually made a motion. I didn't see a motion. But we had the discussion, and the agreement was in general that this is the way the Board wanted to do it. So now, I don't know what the process would be. I mean, I don't think individual Board members, if they want to see the breakdown, I think that's fine. I don't want to approve these breakdowns. I don't want to approve, you know, $15,000 for, you know, whatever it is. I want to approve and let you guys handle it. I just think it's creating a lot of friction. So I don't know if we need to have a motion. I don't know what Board member wants every line item brought forward. I've looked at other districts of comparable size to Beaufort County and South Carolina, and no one's doing it like this. So I just, I, I don't know what is moving forward, but we're having yet another meeting because we can't get 11 people to agree on every single little pot of money that's going to be spent next summer. So I guess I would ask the Board, do we want to go back to this line item or go back to the way we did in 2022 where it was based on the facility assessment and it was more of a categorical approval?
Can I interject again? I'm sorry. Please understand that the big list, as Mr. Nay said, the 300 million big list, is based on that FCA. So everything pretty much in there has been based on the FCA in terms of the roofs, the HVAC, windows, lighting, anything of those projects.
Mr. Dallas, and then Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I would suggest, based on my colleagues' recommendation, that we just send it back to the Operations Committee. You know, in, in Finance, we're having, we're following the same type of effort to consolidate and provide the high-level data, but we've not taken away any of the specifics. So any Board members that feel like you got to have it, you can take a look at it, but we're not going to discuss that. We'll be more pointed in terms of what, where, where is the biggest buck for improving the operation of our district? So that may be a way to handle it as well. But thanks for raising that.
Mr. Smith?
Well, let me go ahead and address this. You know, I understand that some Board members like things certain way, but it's just like when you wake up in the morning, you may like coffee, you may like sugar in your coffee, you may not, you may like cream in your coffee. So.
Look cakey, messy, and settle into fine. Chloe?
Mrs. Gordon, your mic is hot.
Your mic is on.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Chloe, there's somebody else speaking. As soon as he's finished, I'll call you.
She can go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay. So as I was saying, you know, some people may like sugar in their coffee, some people may like cream in their coffee. As far as I can remember, since I've been on the Board, there's been several different ways of how we do this. And I've been in Operations Committee probably about, maybe about, maybe six or five, five of my, about my seven, eight, about my seven years since I've been on this Board. And in Operations, we all have different methods of how you, how you, how you get to things, and I don't think that one's method is more different, so, solely different than the other. I think that the, the information that has been, has been given and what has been asked is, is just a, a formality of understanding and processing. And some people may process things differently than others. And, and within that, the, the list that has been given, I, I believe that we, as, as the, I believe that the chair of this committee have asked for the 8% list at first and for the staff to bring the 8% list. And so I believe in bringing the 8% list. I believe I did, I did make mention of some of what Mrs. Boatright have mentioned in terms of they, they present. And also, there's a book that is given to the Board that, I know that Colonel Guyer every year likes to take, saying, and he requested that all town councils had gotten his book, and that tells from year to year, different things that we have or different improvement that needs to make, make happen. So the, I think, I think the more the question is, as, as a district, in terms of understanding the fund. understanding the funds, and, 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 and understanding the decisions, is that it's been, it's been brought, it's been brought to us, how we perceive, how we perceive it, and whether some people want, uh, in terms of the vision, whether you want the long answer or the short answer, I, I think, I think that is a, uh, that, that's, that's within the eyes of the beholder. But to every time, it seems like every time we get different, uh, different decisions and, and, uh, decisions on this board, everybody, or certain, well, I say, I won't say, I'm going to be, be candid, it seems like, like, certain people or certain groups have a, a problem with it. Oh, you know, we want it shortened. Well, if, like, like, my colleague Earl Campbell would say, who was not here today, oh, well, if you want it shortened and you don't want to be here, go home. Because e- everyone does not learn the same, the same way, and some people understand things differently, and it also helps, at the end of the day, is broken down things to the public, and is very transpo- is very transparent in how we do things, and what, basically, what we're voting on and what we're having conversation about. So, you know, I, I, I'm just kind of, you know, and, and, and I'm kind of, like, kind of getting sick of having this conversation, and when this was brought up before, the same thing wa- was told. And so, you know, if, if, the, the chair, if he thought this, then apparently, apparently, because this was all how, how he thought this was how he wanted to run the meeting and then, and how this forum was going to take care of. I mean, how, how, how the, how this 8% process was going to go. So this is how he runs his process, and how he's, how he's, how he's running it, then I don't think that it's, it's, it's up to us continuously to always having a short, saying that we want, wanted to be short, we want it to be short. Well, if you, if you want it to be that short, then, hey, hey, get what you can get from it and keep it moving. It, there's no meaning that every board member said, you have to attend. We have some people who attend, some board members, but, but, by video, and, and who get what they want. So basically, that's, that's my spiel on it. I, I don't think that there's nothing wrong with it, we've been doing it, and it's been getting done, that's, that, that's what matters, that the job get done. We've had several meetings, and this is a very complex, because you may have, you may see, you may know information that someone else does not know in that district, or you may, may see something, because as, as, uh, he eloquently, uh, Mr. Victor Nay eloquently laid out in the, in his presentation, that a question came from the same Operations Committee, stating that, was asking questions about the work orders, and because of that, they were able to do some troubleshooting, and they were able to find out that that, and that actually helped them out. So let, let's not always say we want the quick way out, because the quick way out don't always give us the answers that we want. I, I think that, you know, just, just respectfully, be respectable to everyone else as well. And for sure, I don't always learn the, the same way everyone else learns as well. Thank you.
All right, sir. Uh, Ms. Gordon?
Thank you. Uh, forgive me for having a hot mic a few minutes ago.
It was hot.
In listening to, uh, the presentations, and thanking Mr. Mr. Nay in operations for laying this out for us, that's a big, uh, job. Every nut and bolt, every chair, every pencil, every piece of material has to be accounted for, because we are using taxpayer money, and we need to be able to break it down, where they can see that one school got 200 napkins and the other one only got 100, and for, for, for whatever reason, and the, and the cost. Unlike Mr. Uh, I, I can agree with both, Mr. Uh, Smith and Ms. Boatright, but I do believe that we have responsibility, Mr. Nay gave a report to us, whether we wanted it short or long, was not our decision. You know, that was that committee's report to us, to the people, and we need to listen, look at it, if you don't want to read the whole thing, don't. But, um, because one person wants one, wants it one way, and the other wants it the other way, it, it makes no sense, we are a board, the 11 of us, know we don't always agree, but we may not always agree, but we should be able to look at documents and get what we need from it and keep it moving. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, rest assured that, uh, we will bring, uh, the recommendation forward at the next board meeting. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll keep it down to one meeting, and I, I just want to say that, um, I, I, I hear my colleagues, uh, I do not believe that the way it's always been done is a justification to do it that way every time. Uh, each, each situation is unique and presents its own, uh, characteristics, scenarios, whatever it is, um, but, uh, rest assured, we'll bring forward a product at the next meeting. That being said, I think we're ready for motions.
Okay. Please read your motions, please.
Okay. I am going to make a motion, but I'm going to amend the one that's printed, so I'm actually, we're going to have to have two votes, and I apologize for that. But, the first one is I move to amend the motion as written, by striking the current language and inserting that I move to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a shared-use agreement with ABOE Development for potential use of BCSD property in support of workforce housing focused on teachers, and to bring any proposed agreement back to the board for approval.
A second?
We have a second? Have second from, uh, Ms. Hay, and any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't need to restate the motion, but now that you've agreed to amend it, um, I've moved, I would like to make the motion.
Go ahead.
Do I need to restate? Okay. I move that the, uh, Board of Education authorize the superintendent to negotiate a shared-use agreement with ABOE Development for potential use of BCSD property in support of workforce housing focused on teachers, and to bring any proposed agreement back to the board for approval.
Second. Second. Mr. Smith, any discussion?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like, for, for the, for the people who, who may not be aware of what ABOE is, um, the reason why I'm going to support this motion is because it will grant, uh, teachers the affordable, affordable housing, the opportunity, uh, for us to look at how we can help our teachers get some affordable housing, and I believe, I look at this project as a, uh, possibility, as a, as a pilot project, uh, moving forward, so, uh, I would just go ahead and, and say that's one reason why I would support it, just giving the community some type of information of what this motion is. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon, motion carries.
Our second motion out of Operations Committee, I move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to finalize easement documents and sign Pritchard Street easement agreement and the Intergovernmental Cost Share Agreement with the Town of Bluffton.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon, aye. Mr. Smith?
I'm going to abstain on this one. I have, yeah, I still have Mr. Smith.
And the motion carries. Anything further, Mr. Nay?
Uh, nothing else for me, I yield a rose.
Rest my time. I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Except for the question. Uh, in, in terms of, you mentioned something in your report about Lays Island Middle School, uh, what, what was that, about the, something about the, yeah?
Um, where'd it go? Yeah, it was the, I think there believed there was needed to be a rezoning of, uh, yes, City View for Planning and Zoning has approved the zoning request, uh, they had to rezone some of the property, um, in order for us to move forward, uh, so they approved the zoning request, uh, and everything, the schedule, uh, we're back to green light on everything.
Oh, okay, and then also, also just like to make note tonight, that, uh, I know that tonight, uh, Lays Island Middle School, and that's why, why the principal was not here, is because they're having their SIC, SIC meeting, and I hope that then they, um, they are letting the community know about the new building of the new high school, I mean, new elementary, I mean, new middle school there tonight, and I don't, don't think that tonight was a great night during our board meeting, especially with one of the board representatives could not be there, uh, I think that was very, uh, uh, very unfortunate, and, um, I'm, I'm not happy about that, I just want to let that know, because people are expecting me to know information, now to go back and kind of piece it together. Thank you. Thank you, Kuzma, report.
All right. And Dr. Rodriguez, Superintendent's Report?
Thank you, sir. Uh, this evening, under Superintendent's Report, we have one item under student achievement, and it relates to the Early Childhood Learning Lab, and we have Dr. Stratos, our Chief Instructional Services Officer, and, uh, Ashley from, uh, she's our Director of, uh, Early Childhood Education, Ms. Ashley Gold.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Good evening, board members, Chairman Guyer, and Dr. Rodriguez. This evening, our Director of Readiness, Ashley Gold, will be sharing with you a collaborative initiative of Beaufort County Early Childhood Lab Center that is completed. We started about a year ago with a grant, so, is currently completed, and this is in collaboration with USCB, and the lab has been created at Hilton Head Early Childhood. This initiative is an educational collaboration with the University of South Carolina at Beaufort School of Education, and a fiscal partnership between the Community Foundation of the Low Country and the school district. I would be remiss if not taking a moment to recognize the foundation's fiscal partnership in supporting us with $125,000 in a grant in support of this initiative that has made a collective idea come to fruition. So board members, with this, I bring forward Ms. Gold, our Director of Readiness, and for further information. Ma'am?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk with you tonight about the Observation Lab Classroom at Hilton Head Early Childhood Center. Um, thanks. So the reason the lab observation classroom was initiated was because we needed to be able to further enhance the professional development learning opportunities for our early childhood teachers. We've recently brought in a program called our Purposeful Play-Based Kindergarten Initiative. Um, that model is supporting our kindergarteners in developmentally appropriate practice using play through their learning. Um, with that being said, so our pre-kindergarten and our kindergarten teachers will be able to take advantage of the Observation Lab Classroom in order to enhance child development, um, train our educators, we hope to research and, um, assess lots of different things that are happening within those classrooms, and then also use it as a very reflective practice. We don't plan to have a class assigned to this particular classroom. This will be a classroom where lots of teachers can flow in and out of with their students, as we have observers behind, um, a two-way mirror in the classroom. So, in a few minutes, I'm going to show you a couple pictures of what that looks like. Um, the benefits of an early childhood, um, Observation Lab Classroom, that concept has been around for years. It is not something we created, um, and we can take credit for, but we, it is something that our district definitely needed in order to further enhance our teachers' education. You can see on the slide here that there are several different benefits to, um, and different groups and populations that benefit, um, when we have an Observation Classroom. When we take future educators, and that's where the partnership with USCB comes in, we're able to bring our in-service, our future teachers in to the classroom, and they're able to see learning through play and teaching how learning through play occurs. They're also able to document children's behaviors, so we can look at classroom management strategies, developmentally appropriate practices. One of the biggest things that you've heard me talk about before is, in some cases, we don't want to create our own gaps, we want to meet our children where they are, and we want to be able to train our teachers to meet children where they are and then continue to grow them as they learn and develop over time. Uh, young children also are benefited, um, this is an opportunity for young children to be in a, a little bit different environment than their typical classroom, although we mirrored, um, the Early Childhood Observation Classroom to the standard early childhood classroom that we have in our district, but we have put a couple other interactive things, um, in this classroom, such as more sensory activities for children, so that teachers can understand how self-regulation is super important for our little ones to learn at a young age. We've also put interactive sand tables, so that, um, the sensory play, I don't know if you've been to Davis Early Learning Center, but in the New Media Center out there, there's an interactive sand table that children can actually, um, manipulate objects in the sand, or bury, or build volcanoes. Um, it's a very, it's a very cool thing, if you haven't seen it. Um, and then our current, um, teachers are able to, uh, also take advantage, so they can learn new classroom management strategies, they can learn new teaching strategies, and improve their practice over time as well. Uh, Dr. Stratus mentioned our collaborating partners on this, um, initiative, so we have Community Foundation of the Low Country that gave us a generous grant of $125,000 to establish the Early Childhood Classroom. That went to the materials in the classroom to provide Low's learning opportunities, it went for some professional development on our end, to learn how to implement a learning lab. Um, and then we also had the University of South Carolina at Beaufort, uh, the Early Childhood Education Department, to partner with us as well, in order to make sure that our, in, our future teachers are receiving the same training as our current teachers. You can see how the space was created, so we took a space at Hilton Head Early Childhood Center, and, um, we built a wall in the middle of, not really the middle, but in part of the classroom. One side is the observation side, and one side is the, um, the classroom. So our observers will be behind a two-way mirror, we can fit about 12 to 15 people in that area. We also have a video recording-type system, two-way audio, so that our observers can talk to the teacher, and the teacher can also talk to the observers. One of the really cool things that, um, happened in early childhood is organized chaos. So when you go in an early childhood classroom and you see these children in their learning centers, it can be lots of things happening at one time. So the video is able to key in on certain conversations, so for instance, if we had two or three children in the block center, um, the video camera can key in on what they're having a conversation about, it'll zone in on that area and then play over a, um, a monitor in the observation room, so that our observers can hear the developmentally appropriate conversation, or ways that the strategies they can learn to develop that language even further with children. So that is kind of a one neat way that we were able to make sure that the observers were able to hear and communicate with what's happening in the classroom. And if you'll go one more, so the, um, classroom has been fully outfitted, uh, the two pictures in, on the left side are the actual classroom with the materials and, uh, learning, um, materials, and then the third picture is what the observation, um, area of the classroom will look like as well.
This is, um, one of the most powerful, uh, professional, uh, development, professional growth, uh, opportunities that there are. Back in 2009, um, when I served as an elementary school principal, uh, my school had a behind-the-glass classroom and observation, and it was an outstanding way to grow and develop our teachers in best practices, whether it was instruction, whether it was classroom management, um, and they would have a targeted focus as they were going in there, and, uh, and they would watch live classrooms. One thing is to sit and talk about it, right, and, and have all the theory, but another thing is to have that theory and watch that practice play out right in front of you. It's very powerful.
Can I add one more thing before we go forward? Um, this was, the two things I have to add is, one, I mentioned collaborating partners outside of the district, this was a collaborating partnership within the district as well, it was not just instructional services that made this happen. Our facilities and construction team absolutely played, um, a huge role, as well as our technology department. Um, we had to come together, and we had to, expenses to pay to make sure this happened, along with the grant, so each department contributed to this, which is making that, um, going to be a huge success. So thanks, Mark, and I know Robert's auditing is not here, but, uh, he helped as well. One goal with this project is to expand it throughout the three clusters in the district, so not only Hilton Head Early Childhood Center, uh, the wind, the observation window is already going in at Mossy Oaks Elementary School, to create one at Mossy Oaks Elementary, for north of the Broad, and then for the Bluffton area, and the new Early Learning Center that we are currently in process of building, we will have an observation room in there as well.
Have questions? Mr. Smith?
Um, what's, what's, what's creating is, what's, what, what would be the difference from what do we currently have at the district office now, because I know we have, uh, we have a, a, an area now where you guys serve at in the district office.
So the area in the district, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to, you talking about the media center?
Uh, and I know that, on the back hall, that they had, they had an area, uh, where it used to be the old, um, uh, Right Choice is at, I know that they had a wing over there.
Yeah, well, one of the advantages is you have, right there in a school center, you have, you have students, you have, and you have the teachers present, and you can bring in, uh, other classrooms from within the school district, as well as you can have, um, uh, other, other instructors visit from other schools, uh, for their own, uh, professional development and the process. And anything else you want to add, uh?
The only thing that, um- The only thing that, what's happening at the district office is developmental screenings for children three to six years old. So it's, it's how children get into our classrooms. But that's the process. We screen them and then we send them to the schools and they'll be in their classrooms. So observation doesn't necessarily happen at the district office as far as professional development.
So what would be the age, the age that we would be targeting with these observations?
Pre-kindergarten, well, we actually could look at Early Childhood Special Education, our pre-kindergarten and our kindergarten classrooms.
So would that be from zero to three, zero to five? Like what age specifically?
Three to five.
Okay. And this is why I'm asking it, because when you said the play-to-learn model, that reminded me of Head Start. I know Head Start is very infamous in that. So how are you working with some of those agencies with this model that, with this information that we are creating? How, what does that look like?
We can currently, we currently already have the MOA in place with Head Start to share professional development opportunities with each other. So we can extend this opportunity to our Head Start partners. And also they can take advantage of observing our teachers or if they would like to use the classroom in order for us to observe their teachers, we could, we could do that.
Looking forward to hear more, hear more of that. Thank you.
Any questions? Dr. Carr?
I'll just chime in as somebody who's been involved in play-based curriculum design for about 30 years. This is awesome. And pulling our teachers in to see it work in live settings is fabulous. So I'm fully, fully supportive. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Nay?
Are you familiar with the playful program? It's, I think it's a play-based type of curriculum, but it's meant to be outside where it's like a playground of parts where kids get to do that kind of stuff. But the whole point is that there's no adult supervision on the playground. And this seems completely opposite of that. I'm reading a book, actually, I think I have maybe a couple chapters left called The Anxious Generation. And the author is a proponent of this playful type program. And this seems completely opposite of that. Where we have, it seems more like helicopter style of oversight, where we have cameras zooming in on kids so we can talk about. So I'm wondering, is this something that is meant to augment? Can you, I guess, expand on that a little bit?
I think this is more about the development of teachers and the development of instructional practices and the development of even behavior, classroom behavior management and those types of skills that are essential and necessary for teachers. So it's mostly really about the development of educators in their own practice.
Okay, not geared towards making sure kids are playing nice together?
No.
Okay. That's animal, okay.
I have a quick question. Ms. Ashley, we're filming these children. Do we have permission from parents to film these children?
We, yes, we will. It's not fully, and Mark, you may want to help me a little bit for the technology piece. It's not recording children. It's more of a live feed. It's not necessarily a recording mechanism. But we would have permission from parents to even go into the observation classroom so that we have that covered. You want to talk about that?
Yes, this is utilizing what they call a 360 camera. So we mount one camera in the center of the room. Nothing, no video on these children are being stored. We will have parents sign off. We do that with, anytime we publicize the picture of any of our students, we have to have parental consent on that. But this is a great opportunity for our teachers. It'll also give us a chance to look at what that could do in the future. We noticed that multiple states around the country are starting to put cameras in all of their classrooms. In doing so, they're seeing a big drop in referrals and incidents in the classroom. So this could be a segue into that. We're not talking about going wide open with that in any means, but it's a start. Thank you.
Ms. Hay?
Yes, I have a quick question. So one of my sons actually attended a lab when he was in preschool and the parents were invited in as well, which was very helpful. I think I've voiced this before, but the parents were allowed in at certain times of the day. Actually, I think we were always allowed access as long as we weren't disrupting anyone else behind the mirror. We were always allowed access to the mirror room. This actually helped a lot of parents see perhaps that behaviors they were experiencing at home weren't happening in the classroom setting because any of us who are parents know that we tend to get a special brand of our children that sometimes educators don't see, like their little angels at school and then their terrors at home or vice versa. So I'm just curious if parents will be able to access this room as well? Because again, if their child is having some kind of issue in a classroom setting or making friends, it's a lot of times very validating and helpful for the parents to see this for themselves. So I'm just curious about that.
Actually, Ms. Hay, you brought forward an excellent idea on building that capacity of our parents in order to be part of that learning mechanism to put in place a purposeful play. So that's something we could work with our parent liaisons and our parent educators so that our parents can pick up and continue that learning outside. So it could be a learning place for them. And it's actually a great point. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
It just helps as well when parents are getting feedback and we have, you know, people from all sorts of resource backgrounds and demographics. Sometimes they're not, it's one thing to tell a parent, but if you can show them,
Yes, ma'am.
you know, what's working at school, that leads them better than if they're just hearing it, whether verbally or in an email. So that would be very helpful.
It's a component we could bring forward and we'll also share that with our grantfunder. Wanted ideas from the board.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I was going to say, I definitely agree with what Mrs. Hay just said. I definitely do agree with that. And just to Mr. Nay's point, I mean, I've never heard that before, but you definitely piqued my interest in that form. But I, like I will say, I think if you could to possibly see the form of it of how Head Start do it, and I was fortunate to go in and see it. It's really remarkable of what that play-to-learn looks like. I think that all of us should go and be able to see how important that is and what that looked like and what that does for a kid in terms of enhancing their learning.
Okay. Dr. Rodriguez, anything?
That concludes our report.
All right. Next item on agenda is Board Business Action and we have Budget Certification. Ms. Crosby?
Good evening once again. We have two more items, so I've been busy up here this evening. So as Ms. Cushingberry brings up, so we have an executive summary, which I can hit on. The PowerPoint you have this evening is much like the first two that you had, a summary. And so I'll just run through the executive summary for you this evening and then we can take any questions or comments. And then we do request this evening that we have a budget certification of both the general fund and the debt service funds. All of the summary information is in the PowerPoints and in summaries. And then the details are in the handouts with all of the fine two numbers that are associated with all revenues, all expenditures in those categories. So first of all, this is the fiscal year budget for '25, '26 school year. This is, budget is based on a lot of, a significant amount of feedback, both through surveys, in-person meetings with students, with staff, with the board, and a lot of setting of priorities and which have been very helpful in guiding the work that we're doing. So out of all of the meetings, many, three primary top priorities emerged and those are teacher and support, staff compensation, academic programs and safety and security. And those are the key elements of our budget. So on the teacher and support staff, we are going to, we have, we're making efforts to maintain competitive starting teacher salaries and to attract highly qualified candidates in our school district. So we are, we are fourth in the state. We were asked to compare ourselves nationally and with our proposals of the increases of both $4,000 and the collapsing of the zero to five steps, that will take us to $60,087 for a starting teacher salary of bachelor's degree. And that will put us just above the national averages and the starting, in the starting teacher salary as well as the average teacher salary overall, which is more in the $72,000 range. So for other, all other employees would be a 3% cost of living increase as well. And then we are proposing to move the steps from 28 steps to 30, which helps to recover or keep some of our most veteran, most senior teachers onboard just a little longer to serve students on our behalf and to help us improve student achievement. Academic programs is another major area where we're investing resources and we continue to do that. Both in the prior year, we had several programs that we were initiating, both in mathematics as we continue to recover post-pandemic and in special education. There was 6% supplement for classroom teachers in, which will continue in the new year for special education teachers. But in addition to that, this year we have some focus as based on feedback from the community, from students, an investment in fine and performing arts, in science, career in technology, education workforce development, dual enrollment, specifically a Tides expansion, which will be with our partners at Technical College of the Low Country, and education technology, specifically in the AI arena. And then we'll continue to support our school resource officers and security guard program, hoping for some state funding as we continue to look for, at the end of the legislative process, and I'll hit on the legislative process in just a moment. And then continuing other services for students that, crisis prevention and response efforts, and then mental health for students and employees. So this budget is a 5% increase over the prior year. 80% of the increases in it are allocated to employee compensation. We are one of the largest employers in Beaufort County. Next to Department of Defense, we are the largest with almost 3,000 employees. So this is a major impact for our employees. And the total revenues would be $376,980,000. And as our state revenues continue to decline, our local tax, it's putting more pressure on us to generate funds locally. And so the need for a 4.3 mil increase to balance the budget will generate an additional 8.2 million, which will be primarily the cost of just the teacher salary, the $4,000 is about $10 million. So we do plan to have a 19%, 19% fund balance at the end of the fiscal year and which we will need to support our credit rating. We have a very strong credit rating, a AA1 with Moody's. And in order to keep that, we need to be similar to our peer districts in terms of the fund balance and then to have reserves on hand in case of an emergency. So the operating millage has, the mill value is just under $2 million and it does exclude primary homes. So that will exclude any homeowners that own a home, their primary home in Beaufort County would be excluded from this as is directed by state law in Act 3D8. So the, there are other operational expenditures, primarily in the area of contracts as well. And we discussed some custodial. We have maintenance contract coming up as well. And those are our contracts that we believe will have increases in the upcoming year. So as Mr. Dallas mentioned earlier, we had a great meeting with the County Council Finance Committee last, yesterday afternoon. Eight members were in attendance. And so we had a great conversation with them. And as he mentioned, they were very supportive. And we look forward to beginning those three readings that are required of us, starting on the day after Memorial Day, so May 27th, I believe. And so this evening, we'll entertain any questions or comments that you have, any other details, and then when you're ready, we can entertain any motions.
Okay, we have two motions. We'll start off and make the first motion and then I'll give you a chance to make your comments. But since this is a key vote, I'm going to be calling a roll for both of these motions. If you want to make a comment to your constituents when your name is called in the roll call, feel free to do so. So we'll start with the first motion, please.
The first motion? I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education approve and certify the fiscal year 2025, 2026 general fund budget in the amount of $3,766,980 with an operations millage rate of 1 to 6.1 mils.
Do you have a second? A second by Mr. Nay. I'll now call the roll. District one, Pastor Isaac Gordon, how do you vote, sir? Pastor Gordon? Nothing heard?
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, I have it. District two, Ms. Chloe Gordon?
I vote yes.
Thank you. District three, Mr. William Smith?
Yeah, I vote yes.
District five, Mr. Victor Nay?
Aye.
Aye? District six, Mr. Alfonso Small?
Aye.
Aye? District seven, Dr. David Carr?
Aye.
District eight, Mr. Carlton Dallas?
Aye.
District nine, Ms. Leah Frazier?
Aye.
District 10, Elizabeth Hay?
Aye.
And District 11, Ingrid Boatright?
Aye.
And myself, District four, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next motion, please.
I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education approve and certify the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 debt service fund budget in the amount of $108,3686 with a debt service millage rate of 36.3 mils.
Have a second? Second?
A second.
Second by Dr. Carr. And we'll start with a vote. District one, Pastor Gordon?
Gordon, aye.
District two, Ms. Gordon?
Ms. Gordon, aye.
District three, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith, let's start off with this comment first. I would just like to say, by supporting this vote, I'm definitely will be in the results section looking for the results of the fruits of our labor of giving these teachers, teachers these, and this opportunity of having this budget be where it's at to give them opportunities to come in and serve. So with that being said, I will certify it, aye.
Thank you, sir. District five, Mr. Nay?
Aye.
District six, Mr. Small?
Aye.
District seven, Dr. Carr?
Aye.
District eight, Mr. Dallas?
Aye.
District nine, Ms. Frazier?
Aye.
District 10, Ms. Hay?
Aye.
District 11, Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
And myself, District four, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Crosby. Now we do also have a board action for opposed OE5 financial planning policy change.
Go ahead and make the motion, yeah?
Let's start with the motion then.
I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education approve the proposed changes to OE5 financial planning.
A second from Ms. Nay. And Ms. Crosby, if you'd like to describe that and we'll have a discussion. I'm sorry, Ms. Hay. Yeah. Wait till I tell them.
Colonel, we also, we've already had the discussion. This was like procedural.
Okay. All right. So we've had discussion. Mr. Smith doesn't seem to think we did.
I was going to say, is this motion coming from the finance committee?
This motion was brought up and discussed at the last board meeting, but due to our policy manual, our procedure for changes to the OE is that they're discussed at one meeting and voted on a second one. So this is just the vote on the discussion that's already been had.
Right. But, okay, was it, so this is not the one that, I know the finance committee meeting, there was a motion in terms of changing some, changing, I think, something that you alluded to earlier. was a motion in terms of changing some, changing, I think, something that you alluded to earlier, Mr. Dallas earlier. I know that there was something that we talked about at the Finance Committee meeting this week.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
We talked about changing the forms of one of the, changing the forms of, in terms of the financial information. That's not, this is.
Ms. Crosby, can you clarify that this is about raising the ceiling on the fund balance?
Yes. There's currently a policy, OE5 has a policy of a fund balance target range from 15 to 17%. This aligns with the government financial standards to maintain a fund balance of no less than two months of the next year's expenditures. So that is basically the gist of the changes that are in, the only change that is in this OE. So that would take at about 60 days of operations.
Well, that goes to show why it's important every time to explain what the motion is. Thank you for that, Ms. Crosby.
All right. We have, it's been moved and seconded. We have a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon is aye. Mr. Smith?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries. We have now the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second by Mr. Dallas. And any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Claudia Gordon, aye.
Motion carries. Next item is future agenda topics. Do you have any future agenda topics? Hearing none, we'll go to announcements. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Colonel Guyer. This evening, I'd like to announce personnel changes or adjustments in the system. Ms. Melissa Pender, currently the principal at Cuse Elementary, will serve next year and beyond as an executive director over elementary. Michelle Sackman, currently the principal at Beaufort Elementary School, will serve as director of teaching and learning in the instructional services division. And we have three principal announcements. Next year, the principal at Bluffton Elementary School will be Brandy Bullock. The principal at Beaufort Elementary will be Ms. Michelle DeBruin. And the principal at Cuse Elementary will be Ms. Kelly Goudy. Congratulations to these individuals, and I wanted to share that with you all.
All right, the next item is public comments.
I did have announcements.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, yes, sir. Also, I would definitely like to give a shout out to the staff who have, we had the Cinderella Fellow Ball that we normally have. They worked very hard. The kids were very excited about that. On Saturday, it was held here on Hilton Head. It was a very job well done. Superintendent, you and your staff did a wonderful job. I just want to say hats off to you. The kids, the people really enjoyed it. It was something memorable moment. I just want to let the staff know and everyone that that was very positive in the district. We definitely appreciate that.
Any other announcements? All right, we'll move to public comments, and we have some new folks here that haven't spoken in some time. I'd like to read some of the rules involving public comments. And one of the rules is issues involving pending litigation are not subject to public comment participation. The use of physically demanding, threatening actions or remarks, comments or conduct by speakers or members of the audience are prohibited, and any behavior that willfully disrupts a meeting to the extent that the orderly conduct of the meeting is seriously compromised is prohibited. No presentation by a speaker shall exceed three minutes. The chair will strictly enforce this time limit. A suitable timing device will be employed to notify the speaker of the end of his or her comment period. Speakers shall not yield their time to another speaker. Persons appearing before the board should be aware that board members are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Neither the board or individual members will respond to speakers during public comment. The board chair will designate a location for public comment. Persons shall remain in such location during their allotted time for public comments. Documents to be provided to the board by the public commenter will be provided to the board's executive assistant following the commenter's appearance. Persons who have not had the opportunity to deliver comments publicly may submit written public comments to the board executive assistant. Those are the rules for board meetings that are on the back of the form that you signed. The first person is Mr. John. I don't think I will be able to pronounce your name right, sir. Emma Chu? Please tell us when you come up.
I'm Chu.
Nice, thank you, sir. And your topic is student safety.
Yes, it is. First and foremost, thank you so much for allowing me to speak before you. You all have a book in your library in Beaufort High School entitled Boy Toy by Barry Liger. It's about a sixth grade teacher who grooms and molests her 12-year-old student. And with what took place earlier this month, we will, one could consider that possibly that student had an opportunity to read from that book at some point. You might need to take a look at that. Also, you have a book entitled Collateral by Ellen Hopkins. And this is in Beaufort High School as well. And page 77 says this, "When my entire top was half exposed, his tongue explored it inch by inch. And by the time he unzipped my jeans, slid them off my quaking legs, my panties had soaked through." It also says, "I opened my legs wide, pushed his face in between, and urged his tongue deep inside me and asked his fingers to follow." It also says this, "When he finally slipped inside of me, if I hadn't been so wet, it would have been uncomfortable. As it was, he filled me up completely, a sensation I had never known. He flipped onto his back, pulled me on top of him. His eyes never left my face as he lifted my hips, slid me backward against his critically hard erection." What would you call that, board chairman? Is that porn? Look at me in my face and tell me that that's not porn. And we have a lot of men on this board. One man, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And men are called to be protectors, not cowards. So why are we allowing this porn to persist in this school system? We even have a pastor on this board, right? And the preacher knows it is better for a person to have a millstone tied around their neck and to be thrown into the sea than for anyone to cause a child to stumble. This is porn! And parents have addressed these issues ad nauseam. 97 books have been challenged, and only five have been removed. Why do you all like porn so much? That's the question. Who is the pervert in this school district that loves porn? You know, if you fight the porn and get rid of the junk, the false DEI crap that they push on kids, maybe you won't have teachers molesting students. Maybe if you got rid of the book Boy Toy from your library, a teacher wouldn't even have the idea of doing such, and a student wouldn't think it's okay. And the kids in this district believe that it was normal for that teacher to do that. That's why they didn't tell anyone about it.
Sir, your time is up.
This is disgusting, and it needs to change.
Next up is Mr. Jim Miller, who is going to talk about AOPA award comparison with other schools.
Thank you much. Again, I can only praise what the school band award of outstanding performance award that you received. It's, like I said, is one, only twice in the last 50 years has any school in this district achieved it. As I look at it, the primary difficulty is the number of students we have in band. It's obviously to get easier to get more points toward that award if you have more students. And this is an area that I am seeing that some of our band directors are reaching out and going to elementary and helping in that respect to recruit and show what can be done. But we also have to look at the other side and say, how do we compare with other districts in the state? And along that line, bands as opposed to athletics, there are five, or there are six categories, 1A through 6A. 1A obviously being the smallest. And whale branch is in that category, and because of fewer students, you don't expect as many people, bands achieving that award. However, across the state, it was 6% of the bands in 1A achieved the award this year. For 2A, which includes Battery Creek, 21% of the bands across the state in 2A achieved the award. For 3A, which includes Beaufort, 32% or a third of the schools achieved the award. For 4A, which includes Bluffton, May River, and Hilton Head, it's 42%. So it's a prestigious, and I can go on further. We don't have any others. In 5A, it was 45%, or in 6A, 55%. All I'm saying is we're making progress, but we aren't up to par. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Ivy Salassi, and her topic is oath of office.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. For those of you who are new to the board and don't know me, my name is Ivy Salai. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about the oath of office that you took when you were elected to fill your respective board seats. In that oath, you swore that you will, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the United States. So help you God. By swearing to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, you are also committing to uphold the laws and regulations that are valid under the Constitution. Now let's talk about Regulation 43170. While regulations are not laws enacted by the legislature, they are legally binding rules that carry the force of law within their designated scope. They are essential for the practical implementation of statutes and are enforceable by the agencies that issue them. For those of you who support the return of sexually explicit material to the libraries and classrooms, you are in violation of your oath of office. As a sworn-in member of the school board, you must abide by laws and regulations. When you don't, you give the impression that you are above the law and that it is okay to break it. The fact that you are bored with the authority to craft policy and expect the policy to be followed, it sets a very bad example for the students in your district. It's as if you're saying that if you don't like the speed limit, just speed. Or worse yet, if you don't like the law of having to be 21 years old to purchase or drink alcohol, then just don't abide by it. I hope that my words this evening sink in just a little bit and you reconsider your position. As a board, you have the power to instruct the superintendent to be proactive in abiding by Regulation 43170. I recommend that the district conduct a full audit of instructional material, which includes library and classroom books under the regulation. Any book that is found in violation should be removed. It should not take a parent making a complaint in order for this to happen. Further, you have an obligation to lead by example. Therefore, be the example you wish to set for the students in this district.
Next speaker is Mr. David Carr. And it just says public comment period. I'm sorry, David Cook. Sorry.
I didn't think I was speaking. Good evening, board members, Dr. Rodriguez and staff. I appreciate you giving me a chance to speak. What you're about to witness is the sound of my voice freely advocating for my children in their schools. It's what it sounds like when I try to advocate for my kids in their schools. They have no voice. In issuing me a trespass notice in August of '23 banning me from my kids' schools, you violated my children's rights, not mine. You've created a prior restraint to free speech. This is an unconstitutional prior restraint, is when any government agency creates a condition in order for someone to be able to exercise their free speech rights, which includes attending school improvement council meetings, PTSO meetings, and any meeting for their child. In issuing me a trespass notice, that's exactly what you've done. On another level, you violated my children's rights to have a parent freely participate in their education, their rights, not mine. This serves as notice. You're going to stop violating my children's rights.
All right. Do I have any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, we will adjourn by unanimous consent. Thank you.